I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the February ninth regular meeting. We have had a chance to look at the minutes. They might have any additions or changes. Hearing none is our motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Mr. Mears-Paw?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
And fiscal, fiscal business, Linda, we have fiscal office report?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Uh, next item is the current bills. We have had a chance to take a look at the current bills. Do you have any questions about the current bills? So, a motion to pay the bills as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Mears-Paw?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
And we have Resolution forty-six seventy-three, two thousand and fifteen, Clear Creek Township Permanent Appropriations. Jack, anything you want to point out in particular?
No, this is very similar to the temporary one. I noted a few things that had been different from the temporary to this one. There's a, there's a cost associated with the election if you choose to do the aggregation on the ballot. I also included a, an expense for a website upgrade. We haven't talked about that. It's been more of a staff discussion. So, there's an expense in there if you want to move forward on that. There's a few tweaks to the BWC because we've got that specifically nailed down for this year. So, those numbers are where they need to be. And then liability insurance, that was a little bit more based on the renewal meeting we had. I think our premium will probably go up a little bit. So, that, that's been an adjustment from temporary to permanent.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions? You have some question about?
Well, I, I think on, on the appropriations, I guess my, uh, my thinking is, you know, we, you know, we had the temporary appropriations to, uh, you know, kind of make sure we had, had what we needed and kind of fine tune. But the, uh, the performance audit coming up might shift these things around in one way or another. And I, I would kind of, you know, certainly let's set aside money so we can do business. But I'd also like to make sure we have discussion, dialogue as we go through the year to make sure these purchases are, you know, what we want to do. Uh, you know, I would, you know, I'd like to see maybe especially staffing because of the additional costs that come with, with hiring people before we start hiring. Make, make sure that we need those people that we're talking about hiring instead of just, hey, here's a guy we want you to hire and, uh, you know, what do you think?
Well, we, they, certainly they have some standards if they're trying to operate with a number of people. So, you know, so are you questioning the standards that you don't want to fill those?
Uh, I, I just want to make sure that, you know.
Well, just so, uh, we can, I mean, that's no big deal. We can talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, uh, but you know, the fire department, police department, you know, they have, but, uh, I can't, I'm not thinking of the right word. What do you call it when your staff do full?
Full complement?
Full complement. I know you're not.
That's the wrong guy on that one.
But I, I, I think you have a couple, uh, spots you want to fill possibly.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I always have to talk about when you get ready to move forward on that. We'll, we'll give them to discuss.
Okay.
Yeah, I, to your point, Steve, I agree. I mean, we go through the audit and it brings to light some things that we need to look at and change. Um, obviously it has to cross our desk before it's finalized anyway. So, we can have that conversation when time comes.
Exactly. And I just didn't want it to get to a point somewhere through the year and say, well, it's on the budget.
Right. And, right. I, I get, I get it absolutely.
Okay, okay. Okay. Very good. Uh, with that is our motion to approve Resolution forty-six seventy-three and present the permanent appropriations to the county.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Mears-Paw?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Anything else under fiscal business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, we have special activities tonight. We have two items. Warren County Sheriff Larry Sims is here to talk about his two thousand and fifteen annual report.
Good evening, everyone.
Sheriff, how are you?
I'm doing all right. How's surveillance doing?
Good.
Good to see you all.
Good.
Just appreciate the opportunity to come and share with you like they have done in the past and see if there's any questions or concerns you have of our office. I distributed a copy of our year-end report, uh, go through this thing page by page. It's also available on our website. I'll just note a couple of things on there. Our calls for service is a little over seventy-one thousand, uh, for the year. It's actually a little bit less than the year before. Uh, our investigators, a couple of noteworthy things. Our investigators were instrumental last year in breaking up a, it's actually statewide range of individuals out of Dayton that were hitting a number of Verizon stores stealing cell phones and reselling those. Uh, our carry concealed permits that we, we talked about. I think the last time I was here, last year, we had kind of fallen behind by a few months and were backlog. And, uh, I think we averaged about fourteen to sixteen hundred permits issued the previous years. Well, in this two thousand and fourteen, we actually issued over thirty-one hundred carry concealed permits. Uh, fourteen hundred of those were renewals. The rest were new. And may or may not have mentioned it, but when you get a little bit more efficient with those and everybody from the surrounding counties also come there.
Right.
Uh, usually you can get in and out now within a week. In fact, I was just talking at Wayne Township last week and mentioned it and, and, uh, saw Pat Davidson in there this afternoon getting his renewed. So, it's a pretty quick turnaround now. So, we're pretty proud of that. Uh, currently we have two hundred and thirty-six registered sex offenders countywide. It's held pretty steady. No significant increases that way. Uh, you leave through there at your leisure. It has our K-9 activities, the number of tracks and searches that they've done. In addition to the drug activity, I'm sure your chief is well aware of the drug task force actually made a hundred and sixty-four arrests throughout the year. And it was, I think, close to seventy that were involved in a break ring out of Wilmington that was distributing heroin. And it talks about the Corps of Services Division. You heard me talk about the number of subpoenas, you know, approaching six thousand subpoenas and, you know, about twenty-five hundred arrest warrants. Uh, it describes the activity for a dare. School resource officers, individuals, not only did they provide the drug education to a little over seventeen hundred students, but they provide these types of training and public awareness events throughout the year, either at adult or, um, children-related events, especially as the weather gets nicer and if you guys participate in different things for, you know, uh, public education. So, you can see just by looking through there how busy they were. We were also able, last year was the second year in a row that because of drug forfeiture dollars, we provided a, or assisted in a training slash camp at Camp Joy. Uh, I think the year before we had thirty-five underprivileged children, Warren County children that went there. And, um, last year was fifty. So, it was, it's a very good opportunity for some of these young people that don't really get a chance to get that, uh, camp experience. I don't know if you've ever been there, but they do a phenomenal job at Camp Joy anyway. So, uh, we were just glad to be part of all that. And then kind of winding down the jail, and jail's always a topic of conversation anymore. We were at or over capacity over a third of the days last year. So, that's become commonplace and we're, it's a juggling act with the, uh, actually a very good relationship with all the courts and the judges who kind of stay in communication about what our population's like. And, and as you listen to all the information about the heroin situation and how bad it is, it's bad. And in fact, it's the single biggest reason why our female population went from probably averaging thirty-five to sixty-five in the last couple of years. And, uh, in fact, I was with, at a meeting this morning over at Atrium with many of the Milltown people and talking about that, uh, jails, you know, experiencing some of the same situations. And, um, so we're working on that. Uh, additionally, the additional good news about the jails, late last fall, the commissioners did approve us being able to write up an RFP to hire a jail consultant, put on an addition. So, that's about ready to come out public. We've been working on that for the last couple of months so that we can get somebody in that area of expertise to work with county facility manager. So, uh, hopefully within the next couple of months or so, we'll have an idea of what that expansion might look like, the size that's needed. Uh, and I'll share that information, make sure that gets long because it seems to be a lot of questions that we get. Uh, the other thing that, that we did in our jail program, because of the heroin situation, one of the judges was instrumental in helping us jumpstart a treatment program that begins out of the jail. You know, I won't go through all that information, other than they're getting a shot while they're in the jail and then released and then some intensive, uh, programming along with additional shots as they leave. It's, it's a non-narcotic shot, unlike some of the other treatments they use where they can either get addicted to those types of, uh, drugs or they end up selling them. This is not, not something they're going to be able to sell and make any money. So, it's early. We're seeing a little bit of success, but the numbers are small. And so, it'll be interesting to see, you know, how that plays out. So. And then just lastly, I just, you know, compliment, you know, your department, really countywide law enforcement. I like to talk about this because I don't think it happens very often, very many places. But I think we have just an excellent relationship in this county with our law enforcement partners. Uh, that continued again last year and I'm sure will continue into the future. And the biggest advantage of that is we train together. Uh, and we have, you know, numbers of trainers from various departments that actually come together and not only provide, uh, law enforcement training to all of our partners, but last year we were doing the active shooter response to all the schools in the county and a number of the county buildings. And, and as time will allow, we'll, we'll open that up to some of the other government offices as well. But it's all a credit to all these people that sit at the table and leave their egos at the door. And, uh, I'm just kind of, I'm proud to be part of all that. So.
Very good.
Questions or concerns?
Thank you for coming and sharing.
I had a quick question. Obviously, the heroin issue is, is at the forefront. Just out of curiosity, a hundred and forty-four grams seized?
Right.
Assume for a second I don't know a darn thing about heroin. Where is that in your years past? Is, are, you're seeing more arrests, obviously, but seizures are a different subject.
Yeah, seizures. So, you're seeing more and more of the seizures. I mean, we're seeing it in, the seizures are actually relatively small. When you're talking about the, the K-9 units, because they're making traffic stops and they're having, you know, a handful of capsules is how they buy them. And in fact, a lot of them, and I think your officers know too, that a lot of them are coming back after trips to Dayton or people coming down here distributing them locally. And, and those types of K-9 seizures are very small amounts. Uh, when you get into the drug task force seizures, which aren't on there, uh, I think they're planning on coming up to visit to show you what those look like. Those are those targeted mid to upper level traffickers that, that are being taken off at different locations. And, um, sometimes here in the county, but a lot of times in our surrounding counties as well. But yeah, those are small amounts in the, in the big scheme of things. But scary thing is, is those people are shooting these things up as they're driving back here.
Right.
All right. I've got a quick question for you, Lee. Explain what that community program is for the, the policing, where you guys have given class for community people to come in?
Oh, the Citizens Academy?
Citizen Academy. What is that and how does it last and all that?
Well, we're getting ready to start that again here next month. Uh, it's nine weeks. Uh, this will be our fourth one. It's nine weeks. It's one night a week. It lasts for three hours, like on a Wednesday night for nine consecutive weeks. And, yeah, actually, um, each, each night is a different exposure of what our office does. Begins by just an overview of the entire services that our office is involved in. And then, uh, you may have investigators in there talking about cold case investigations. We have a SWAT team coming in. You want to have a K-9 group coming in. There's a jail tour. Um, just kind of a variety of all the responsibilities that we have as an office.
For the last nine weeks, it's three hours a night?
Three hours a week, yeah.
So, is it kind of like one-handed leadership, only just focusing on sheriff's office?
Yeah, I mean, this is just focused on what our office provides in terms of, uh, law enforcement services.
Okay, I'm just curious about that.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We also have another special activity. The Springbrough Rotary President, David Spencer's here. That's the president, David, if you would.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us and finding us on your agenda. So, I'm David Spencer, president of the Springbrough Rotary Club. And with me is Kevin Day, this who is currently our treasurer and is the president-elect for next year, July first, I believe. Unless you wanted earlier, right?
No, thanks.
Okay. So, uh, for those of you who don't, are not aware of the Springbrough Rotary Club founded in two thousand and three, actually chartered, I'm a charter member myself. And over the last, what now, eleven years, we've been very passionate about giving back to our community in Springbrough, Clear Creek. And we have regular annual projects that we contribute to. Uh, we've handed out since our inception in two thousand and three, over four, almost four thousand plus dictionaries to third graders every year, uh, across the, across the schools, as well as building Rotary Park, if you've had the pleasure of going down Simp' Forty-One and saying that. And, uh, we've contributed quite a bit to the North Park as well, the concession stand and such. So, unlike, um, some others in your past in the meetings, we're not here to ask for them. We're actually here to provide Clear Creek Township with a check. And that is on behalf of our next big project, partnering with the Clear Creek Township Police Department, the Chief Carroll, and supporting them in the Safety Town initiative that they're taking on. Personally, Safety Town is near and dear to my heart because we have, um, seen it grow, uh, historically since forever, uh, in the fifties, I believe. Um, I was a participant up in Cleveland area when I was aboard. So, uh, with knowing, understanding that John and the team are looking to create that here, the Springbrough Rotary is wanting to provide, um, a kickoff check for seven thousand dollars on behalf of the, uh, club. So, uh, without further ado, we're, we're, we're excited. So, that'll take care of, from what we understand, and I've come to a little bit of agreement is we're going to see some pretty automated police educational, um, equipment. And we look forward to working with them as well as partnering on any volunteer work we can do. So.
Very good. No, Chief, why don't you get up there?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Do we get them?
I'll take them up.
Get a picture.
Pass it to him.
Hold on. Get Larry to.
I'll take a cup of water.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, anything else under special activities? Anybody have anything else for that? Okay. Anything under unfinished business? Okay, hearing none, moving on to new business administration. Do you support that?
No, sir.
Okay, fire district, we have a paramedic certification recommendation. Jason, no, is that spelled?
That's right.
Yeah, that's right. Is it, okay, is it spelled?
I had a chat strange though.
Yeah, Huddennall. Is a permanent part-time firefighter EMT. Paramedic, okay. EMT paramedic. Is there a motion to move Jason Huddennall to a permanent part-time paramedic position along with appropriate pay increase?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Mears-Paw?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
That it, Bob?
I just wanted to give you a little bit on a twenty-five Jackamar court.
Sure.
They're still in the cleaning process, left the planning meeting just before I came up here today. Still looking at about two weeks to accomplish cleanup. There's already been two hundred and plus containers removed from the site of various chemicals. Some identified, some are not, as they built out prior to cleanup. We'll be working with, uh, US EPA and Ohio EPA and several other agencies over the next few weeks to rectify that. I'll be willing to answer any questions you might have as we progress.
Who's paying for all this work?
Uh, federal government.
We are, but we're all the way around.
All the way around.
As long as it comes from another drug.
Why, why isn't this man's insurance paying for it?
I, well, I'm sure Mr. Wade probably can answer better than I, but because of what he had stored in the home, um, basically there's no insurance for cleanup within your homeowner's policy.
So, are we placing a lien on his property?
Uh, we're taking no action.
EPA's really a hundred and ten percent in charge, would you say?
Yeah, in actuality, they're the ones that are making the decisions. We're there to support them. Uh, they're a resource with technical knowledge beyond.
Since they're funded by the federal government, they have unlimited resources. So, recruiting that money probably isn't a priority.
I don't know how that works after they.
They desired to first get the money from the property owner and then the insurance. Both of them have said they cannot handle the cost. This will be at least a hundred thousand dollars at this point for cleanup.
So, and I.
That land or something.
Right. I asked this and we didn't get to finish our conversation before. I apologize. But were there any calls that, and obviously this is a city issue, but did you get any feedback from Chief Crowell or his team as to any calls? If this guy was a hoarder and had this, this amount of chemical in his house, I have to believe some of it came UPS. There's a frequency to that. And I'm just curious because this is, this is, this is disturbing to me on many levels.
Approximately two weeks prior to this fire, we had a fire at the residence.
Right.
Um, that one, we identified as a hoarder home, but we had no idea the contents that this gentleman had.
Okay, okay.
Um, as for tracking, that's something, we don't know exactly how all the chemicals arrived at his home or anything to that.
And we're not talking about a couple gallons of acetone.
Well, it's all small containers that were brought in. It's the accumulation of all of this material that seems to be the largest hazard.
Okay.
Is he still practicing damage?
We believe he is, but we've not confirmed that. He's still licensed.
Certainly a very odd situation.
Hoarding is becoming a bigger issue. And this is our third hoarder home that we've had a fire in in the last two and a half years. And it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a completely different hazard.
Can't find a fire in a hoarder home?
We had to abandon this home where they were fighting.
Yeah, it's dangerous. You know, that's, uh, on, on the insurance side of things, if we were able to recognize that we have a hoarder, they can't get insurance to buy it. I mean, they'll get canceled as soon as they can legally get off of them, which is never immediate. They have to get them, but that's, it is a big problem. I had a few of them get off unfortunately. Okay. Very good. Anything else? Thanks for the update. Okay, zoning department, we have Resolution forty-six seventy-four, resolution determining.
Yeah, if we could, sir. Um, that actually got resolved today, past the deadline, but I'd like to pull it if I could.
Result nonetheless.
Yes.
That's great.
Very good.
Good.
Good job. Okay. Item number two, set a date for a public hearing for proposed text amendment.
Yeah, this is probably the more exciting of the activity. This is the date that you have set aside for your retreat. And I'm asking to know where we're going to have the location of the meeting and how you want to proceed. So, we started staff. Jack wasn't sure if we're going to have a meeting at the county, if we're going to have a meeting here. And I just want to get your guys' input. At a minimum, we have to open up the public hearing and then table it to the next meeting because of the statutory timelines that we're under. We don't actually have to conduct it there, but I just need to advertise it as starting at a location.
You know, I, if we have the meeting, the retreat, so to speak, off premises, I have no problem trying to design that so we can get back here.
I don't either. I, I don't.
If we have it in London, we can, and we quit at four, surely we can make it back here by five-thirty, I would think.
Well, that was one of the things to confirm. We have a room at the county building, um, the one half of there, the commissioner's room, we're, we're scheduled to meet in and that would work for how Julie would do it and the space needs. I think the one question was, you know, do you want to come back here and have your regular meeting at five-thirty?
I just made the assumption that's what we're doing.
Okay, well then, probably in solving that, it'll be that night and you have your regular meeting.
So, obviously, that's supposed to be finished by four.
Yeah, she said nine to three, four.
Right, I thought.
You should have plenty of time to get back. I just didn't want to assume.
No, that's okay.
Come back here and meet too.
Yeah, so if that's the case, then you guys can have a regular meeting to make the hearing and make it happen.
Yeah, we would like to entertain a motion to set a public hearing for five-thirty on March the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, please. Five-thirty, on five-thirty.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Mears-Paw?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Okay, we have appointments to the Warren County Regional Planning Commission. Saw the listing on that. Anybody have any questions about that? This is just informational, I assume. Do we have to vote on this?
Uh, just if you'd like to, so that, put those people as representatives and alternates, that'd be great.
Okay. And we've been presented with a list of representatives and alternates. Is there a motion to approve this list?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Mears-Paw?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Anything else, Jack?
I don't understand, sir.
Very good. Maintenance department, we have Resolution forty-six seventy-five, a resolution certifying changes to the Clear Creek Township road mileage during, uh, two thousand and fourteen. So, we're up to eighty-six point six-six-five miles, up a couple, eighty, it was eighty-four point four. Additional.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I think when, I always say this, but I'm pretty sure when I started, we were right at forty. So. Amazing, actually.
Just curious, are those Whiting Creek Reds? What birds are those? Well, they have been.
There's a, there's a list.
Oh, is there?
Yeah, there's a list and.
Several different ones.
A large, I mean, I would think a large portion of it is the, the development of, uh, country brook. The addition of those rosen.
Yeah, we've got Country Brook, those of Whiting Creek. You also have, uh, Cocksdale Farms.
A lot of extensions.
Some big chunks.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions? Okay, is, uh, do you want, I guess we have to do the, any, we have a motion. Is there a motion to approve these, except, I guess, except the new road mileage?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Mears-Paw?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Anything else? Maintenance department? He has.
Silence now.
All, all's quiet. Okay, staff updates. Anybody have anything they'd like to add?
If I could, sir.
Um, this time, our last meeting, we had a discussion about, um, computer systems
and a evaluation of that system. Couple of different items are still percolating. Just wanted to bring to your attention. Um, first item is that can we have something done with college? And I did talk with Sinclair. They were the only entity that wanted to deal with us. And they had a discussion about internships of being a possibility on a nine-week cycle, but it is individuals that are in learning process, so they're not in the expert process. So, that has some challenges. There's also a discussion, um, some of our residents gave me some time and suggestions about having a computer steering committee comprised of residents who are in the field. And at this point, we're trying to identify how would we actually, um, get those folks to participate in the steering committee format as an avenue. Also, I have a call out to the NOVAC consulting groups that are doing our other. Also, I have a call out to the NOVAC consulting groups that are doing our other activity, if they could fold this in, what cost that would be, and then we're still pursuing independent groups looking at what those costs would be. So at this point in time, still have some irons in the fire, just want to let you know that we are working on it and should have something next time. That's for the direction.
Has there been some dialogue with the folks at the county that are doing this, anything?
Yeah, I had a call in to Matt Nolan and he's supposed to be getting some information back. They're supposed, I think, last week they made their decisions, so there's.
I mean, who the guy is? Yeah, I need the guy is.
From that, you know, it was kind of, after we make their decision, they'll give some information, so I'll get some more. We'll see if that's some runner-up or the other. It was a much larger project than ours, so not sure where things would be cost-wise, so. Okay.
Very good. Anything else under staff reports?
I had a couple items. One was the meeting on the twenty-third confirming the board meeting for that night was still the way you wanted the timing to work. You're going to have a call with Julia, so you might think of the topics, you know, that we would hash out. That would be, the meeting will be something that the department heads are at, it'll be attended by staff, so it'll be kind of the group discussion on things. Final details will, will come out, you know, what time and what to expect and so on. You have a packet from Energy Alliances, I had met with Dan Deeters who's kind of spearheading their efforts. He and I talked about the aggregation, I've talked to two other communities, two other townships. And what might be appropriate is, is Clear Creek, the, the board, we get on the same page as far as how we want to deploy this, but it probably would be more appropriate, from what I'm gathering, that others would follow the same track of timing. So if, if Turtle Creek wanted to put aggregation on the ballot, they could, and then the, the suppliers could give us a price at the same time and understand we're going out at the same time. But it probably doesn't make sense to tie ourselves together at this point. But that's a packet of information that they use to go and, and explain it to, to a board, and I guess if we decide we want to pursue that, I, myself, or Steve's expressed interest in this, could make a run at talking to some of them and seeing if they have greater interest, but there, you have a packet and any feedback you have would be great. One last thing, just to update you, I, I've talked to a couple companies, Duke Energy being one of them, this is not having to do with aggregation. There are energy saving programs where if you make some capital improvements, you can finance the cost of those off the savings for a number of years. Duke has a smaller scale version of that, that they really look at the lighting stuff. I'm looking at what those mean and, and kind of numbers, but just FYI, that would be something you may need to be involved in and just to let you know that that's out there being discussed and something will be in a.
Did you, when you talked to Duke, did you ask them, I don't know what a good number is that you're hoping to reach through the aggregation, but if you ask them if they will match a number or come close, I mean, we now have a good friend who's president and CEO of DPNL, who I'm sure would do whatever they could to make sure we don't do the aggregation.
Duke Energy.
It seems to me that that's the easiest thing to do, and before you put something on the ballot and go to all that trouble, you should do the easiest things first.
The regulated utility, the pricing is set through the PUCF, it, it will be what it is, and we're trying to put people in a position to, to be able to get a better rate than what they'd have if they didn't do anything else. So Duke and DPNL are stuck with whatever the rate is. DPNL and Duke both have a retail arm that could provide pricing for an aggregated program, so they would be able to do that. Now, it's, it's not attached to DPNL regulated or Duke regulated, it's not allowed to be by law. So they, they would absolutely have the ability to, to provide a price. And I think one of the, one of the things I understand to be a challenge for some of the communities, especially Warren County, is Duke's representative is very highly regarded, nice gentleman, and so communities have been less inclined to pursue an aggregated vote. And so I'm hoping to gain his acceptance of, of the aggregation, so he's not.
He likes Tim, he's a good guy.
I'm sure he's been as nice as our residents, though.
I find, Tim's well thought of, but I don't think he's well thought of enough to keep people from doing this.
I'm saying, one of the things, one of the things I have understood is that other communities haven't considered aggregation because they have such a strong relationship with Duke Energy. So that's one of the things, if we can have Tim not, or Duke not, you know, going, don't do it, don't do it, then we might gain some ground with our neighbors.
Were you able to find the savings from those other townships, what they had derived from aggregating? How much money they had saved, their communities or?
No, not in total. Hamilton Township was the only one I had numbers from, and they're about five and a half cents compared to maybe six point two, that's per kilowatt hour.
And your packet does have some, just pictures and certainly those are some big savings numbers. We don't really know over what period of time that was.
Now, we don't do anything and we're paying four point six through DPNL per kilowatt hour. There's a thing called DPNL Energy that we sign up like for a year, and it's, every year it goes down for us, but we're on DPNL.
I, I have to sue your bill. If you're paying four point six with DPNL, that would shock me on your electric supply, on your generation cost.
Yep.
They're more like seven cents.
That's what we're paying, but we're not with DPNL, we're with DPNL Energy.
Okay, yeah, I'd love to sue your bill and, so I've heard of that.
Because, because the last meeting, I went home and looked to see what we were paying, they were talking numbers that were above what.
That, that's a really good rate, and you, you got to make sure you look at the right numbers, because that's like a really good rate.
Yeah, because even, even the letter they sent that actually says four points, you know, your new, because we just got it, right? Like in January for the new one.
And you're, you wouldn't change. If you're in contract, you don't get put in the aggregated program. It's people who aren't aggregating that are open, what's that?
Oh, in his program.
Yeah.
We just got some, you know, like, what you call junk mail, we got something in the mail, looked at it, looked at my bill. We started, what, about three years ago? About three years ago, signed up. I mean, I was, about that, seven cents, five cents, yeah, well, you know, two cents, kilowatt, that adds up.
Good deal.
And it's been progressively going down every year. I'll bring, I'll bring our bill then.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's a really good rate. I mean, five and a half cents is a really good rate right now.
We're like four. It's four six.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's part of the challenge too, is how many people do that, that actually drill down and, and look at that, those numbers. So that's, that's where our gauging the interest is going to be, you know, how people, I, I don't even know if we could get into how many people are already under contract. We'd have to go to both of those entities and try to figure that out, but.
They pull, you'd see eligibility, not maybe names, but there'd be X amount are eligible, X households, X amount are eligible. So they, they pull all that and they would understand, then they could get X amount in the program, so it makes it, you know, five thousand households or.
Sure, they can, they can show you the wrong number.
Yeah, you, you release that, you release them to get that information if you aggregate, that's, that's part of it, yeah.
So, I guess. Depending on what it costs to put on the ballot, and did we ever, Linda had some numbers.
Yeah, but Jack, Jack, when he went down, he did take out half, he gave me all of Clear Creek.
All the precincts, yeah, that's what, that's why I balked when you said, because I was trying to remember how many.
But it's still, it's still fourteen and it's going to be six hundred to a thousand dollars per precinct. So it's going to be somewhere between six thousand, eight thousand, I think Jack said something about appropriating thirteen or fourteen.
I have thirteen thousand included, along with the six thousand that was already in there. Thirteen, I think it's thirteen precincts out of the twenty-eight are just Clear Creek. The fire levy, which was in May, was nineteen thousand dollars, and so that's seven hundred or so, six hundred and seventy over the twenty-eight. So if in May it costs us six seventy, you have to assume in November it's going to be less than six seventy. He, the elections, the, Brian, he said twelve hundred's the most it could possibly be, so that's what he would tell me. And I'm like, okay, what did the fire levy cost?
That's what I told him, I said, what's the.
Probably a better measure of it, so. You, you put it on the ballot in August, you don't pay till the next year, right? You, you don't end up paying.
You take it off the next settlement, so it would be in January.
We could redo the number if we were too low.
You would run something like that in August, though, right?
He'd know how many ballot issues.
Yeah, you would be running in the special election, they'd be writing.
No, no.
I'm just, you'd know how many issues are on the ballot and he could say, oh yeah, it'll probably be five hundred dollars a precinct or something.
He actually doesn't do those numbers until after the election, because I guess weird things happen, but you, but you're safe in those numbers.
Well, anyway, I think we're certainly hard to pursue this, unless we think it's.
Absolutely.
A bit too expensive.
Well, we need to kind of coordinate what we want to do or say prior to the, the twelfth, if we're going to share with our friends at the, at that banquet.
Yeah, yeah, we meet that Monday, the night, I believe, so.
Yeah, it'd be the second Monday. I'm sure any of the groups like Energy Alliances would, would do this, but they will come out and do a lunch and learn kind of thing, if we find other communities would like to understand it better, get more information.
I, I think my guess would be most of them would be not as prone to listen to some salesman try to sell them something as opposed to us saying, hey, this is what we think and why we're doing it. Maybe we can get some, some background information from them, but I, I don't know that their presentation would carry a whole lot of weight if, if the municipalities don't know them, so.
Yeah, however we want to disseminate the information, I, I talked to Wayne Township and Turtle Creek, pretty sure it's Turtle Creek, and they don't have an administrator, so it would be their clerk that we would get with and give more information. And Wayne was definitely interested in understanding it better.
Okay, well, more to come on that and have, and talk at the, did, did you talk to Neil to make, make sure it was all?
I didn't confirm anything with him about opening up that topic for that night.
It'd be as good a spot as any of them, I think, why not? Won't take long.
Yeah, I can ask if, if he's going to be offended, or, or maybe remain silent and go for it.
Ask him.
He's paying for the chicken, so I think it's appropriate to make sure he's good with it.
Anything else? Anybody have any comments, questions or anything?
Okay, is this a good time? Okay, I talked to Ed about this before the meeting. I have a computer on my desk that's five years old, it's, it's the old desktop. Jeff and I have spoken about it, and since then, we have gone to a laptop. That desktop no longer supports our current UAN software, so I can't use it anymore. That changed in January and went to a, no, what, last year, I guess it changed, where we can't, we can't use it anymore. So rather than putting, cleaning it up and putting on govdeals.com, the state auditor suggests, they donate any equipment, the state auditor pays for all of my equipment through our UAN fees. Their suggestion is they, 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 they consider it a gift to the township when it is no longer viable, and they suggest if you want to purchase it, it's seventy-five dollars. So knowing what we could get for on govdeals.com and the effort of getting it cleaned up, I suggested that I purchase it personally and take it home so my son can play his Sesame Street games on it. Having said that, I want to do that in a full meeting and get a vote out of the board, so it doesn't look like there's anything untoward with that. So if the board wants to do that.
Since you're taking it, you don't have to, we don't have to get it cleaned.
No, because all that's my stuff.
Which is an expense in itself, and it's only worth nothing if we, if we sell it to GovDeals, we'd get out three or five bucks, probably.
It's going to be just for parts, because we're going to pull the hard drive and other things like that.
Can't even throw the monitor away.
Third point. Is there any reason we can't do that?
I don't worry. I think Linda's might check that out with the auditor's office.
Well, they send to me a letter every time we get new equipment that says, you're, consider your old computer a donation to your township. If you'd like to purchase it for seventy-five dollars, that's our suggested cost.
Perfect. Why I have no problem with it.
If I could, just cover my poster.
It's a motion to allow, well, Linda to purchase the outdated computer and her old computer for seventy-five dollars. So who? Not me? Second?
You don't have to vote yes or no. Mr. Gabbard? Mr. Mears Paul?
Yeah.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Very hard, sir.
I'm great, sir, how are you? I'd like to put something on your guys' calendar, March fourteenth is the polar plunge out of Cedars Creek Lake. Freezing for a reason, we have a lot of firemen and policemen going to be jumping in the water for Special Olympics Ohio, so if you are free that day, come on out, our police department helps organize that event and make sure it's a huge success, and we are already over a hundred and twenty participants, so we're doing very well. One o'clock, costume contest and into the water. Ages from twelve to seventy-six, so you're not too old.
Except you, Steve.
Wow.
I got a question on that. Is there an individual that's sitting right over here, one of those hundred and twenty-some odd participants?
You know, I.
I saw something on Facebook that challenged.
Somebody has to man the command post and call the fire department when Larry starts to run.
So.
I don't think that would be a problem.
At this point, it'll be ice skating.
Steve, to answer your question, first year we went out to the lake to make sure that it was a viable location. Once the chief realized that he was about twenty feet on ice from the shore, all I saw was this.
A, A and S's?
Hmm, yeah, so, I've never seen him back out close to the water again. He's been there almost every year, but never seen him close to the water, so.
I just want to get the walking on water.
But.
But I saw a challenge on Face, on Facebook.
A lot of his family members want to see it.
And, and I heard there was a minimum amount, that you had like seventy-five dollars, I was going to make sure that there was seventy-five dollars. Just one person and.
Seven grand will get me there.
Maybe I should work for the road.
I've been there a couple times and it's, first off, it shocked me how many people go to that, and I've seen Eric May out there in a Ringbrow clown wig running, so it, it is a fun one to watch.
Now, I did also see something about if there was cake involved, he would do it.
You can't eat cake out there, it's too cold.
But he stated on the Facebook page about cake.
A lot of things were cake, that's true.
Yeah, he said, he stated something about cake and I saw that.
Everybody's got like this cheek.
Seven hundred dollars more cake.
Yeah, that'd be a good range.
Very thank you for that information. I mean, we, if we just, if we are not going to go make the plunge, who do we donate to?
I was going to ask that as well. Can you send us an email?
Sure.
As a reminder, because I, it's the same thing for the tower, for the firemen. I always, it seems like I get that, or I hear about it after it's done, and I won't be able to donate before, so.
You can still donate.
I appreciate that.
There's a website.
There's a website, I can channel that check to the person that's appropriate.
If Eric May's sitting there saying, I will take your check, so that it adds up to his, his amount.
Just, yeah, if there's a link or whatever.
Actually, my dance team's performing that day, so I can't do it this year, so.
Your dance team?
Yeah, well, let's leave it at that.
We've, we've seen a dance team. It's good stuff.
Mantasia.
Yep.
Man of many parts.
Look it up on YouTube.
Mantasia?
Uh-huh. We've been to one.
Is it at Diamonds?
Okay, anything else, we'd probably send a jury. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?